Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a six o'clock meeting of the, it's a joint meeting with the planning board. Planning board doesn't have a quorum. I declared this meeting open. And the discussion this evening will be, we have a visitor or a guest from the United States Department of Agriculture to talk about rural development and grants and long-term loan programs. So I would like to welcome Mr. Lyndon S. Nichols from USDA.
Thank you. I do have that extra packet here. Is that the nine nine four? No. My name is Lyndon Nichols. I'm the area director with USDA Rural Development. I don't know how familiar you are with the agency, but we do housing, community and business loans in rural areas, which is based on population. And based on the population, Millville is eligible for our community facility programs. On the left-hand side, it's just basic information, kind of just talks about the community facility program, which is the one program that I'm going to talk about tonight. Just a little bit of what we've done in the state and some examples of some of the projects that we've done recently and the funding that we've provided in Massachusetts. The bulk of the information on the right-hand side is there's some fact information on the first sheet. Kind of just talks about the type of facilities we can do. Now, are you just looking at a town hall at this time or other projects?
So, maybe I can provide a little bit of background as far as who I contacted.
Joe, do you want to sit?
I didn't want to.
Yeah, I know. It might be a lot. Take a fly one.
So, for the record, Joe Layden, town planner. Basically, in with the planning board's work and working on the master plan, there's a couple of goals and objectives that are very important in order to identify the town's policy of looking for completing the master plan. One involves to support economic development, which in order to get some of the density that's needed, based on a recent village development study that CMRPC did, we need additional density, which really can only be supported by some sort of municipal sewer system as well as water, either through connecting to adjacent towns or through the town of Millville building it itself. These are really central goals and objectives within the draft plan. And part of the discussion with the two boards tonight was, one, to make sure that there was some level of consensus. And I'll just pass this along so that you have. These are basically just summary of goals and objectives that are within the current draft of the plan, just to make sure that we're on the same page. I had recently attended a, this was back in March, a conference at Holy Cross where USDA was a presenter for providing assistance to small rural communities. And one of the things that I found interesting was the assistance that they provide for communities, not only for construction of facilities, but then also various grants and programs for water and sewer. So that's when I reached out to the USDA office to inquire about their availability to come in and talk to the Millville Planning Board and Board of Selectmen, just to sort of give an overview as far as what they offer. Because as we know, we're faced with a couple of challenges here in town, this building being one of them. And then also the need for additional infrastructure. So this was, one, to facilitate that conversation between both boards, which unfortunately, because of, I just would say Murphy's Law, we don't have a quorum yet of the planning board. But then also, it allows for us to get an understanding as far as other resources that maybe a federal agency is able to provide as we look for not only funding, but then also how we can try to approach achieving some of the goals and objectives that we've identified. So at least that's a little bit of background and coordinated with Lyndon as far as coming to speak with all of us tonight.
All right. So you're looking at water and sewer as well, possibly? They're both under our community programs. There's a little bit more information, maybe I'll email over to you, Joe, regarding most specifically on water and waste. But under the community programs, we have community facilities and we have water and waste programs. Our water and wastes are for populations of communities under 10,000. What is the population for Millville?
Three thousand.
Very small. So obviously, you're eligible for pretty much all of our programs. Both programs offer extended terms, which is one of the things that makes our program more attractive. We can go up to 40 years on community facilities and water and waste loans and loan programs. We can do buildings. We can do equipment. We can do any kind of infrastructure under this program. We've done a lot of safety buildings, town halls, sewer treatment plants, water treatment plants, sewer and water lines, roads, et cetera. You name it, we pretty much have done it in small communities. So I said, as I said, the first sheet is the fact sheet. Right behind that just kind of tells the different, I just pulled the page that shows Millville, what it's eligible for. It is eligible for community facility loans. It is not eligible for community facility grants, which is based on median household income. So, you know, there's very few communities actually in Massachusetts that are grant-eligible. And as I said, because the median household income is only 82,000, Millville is under the median state, but it's still an intermediate income for the state. So it's not, it's not grant-eligible on the community facilities. The other thing I provided in the packet was information that kind of just compares that, you know, if you were to go with a public bond versus rural development, some of the advantages, as I said, instead of using a 20-year, you can go up to 40 years. The advantage to that, obviously, especially when you're trying to pass it at town meeting, it's going to have a less of an impact on the taxpayer. There's no prepayment expenses. You can refinance it at any time. You can make additional payments. So it gives you a lot of flexibility. If you go out to the 40 years, you're not bound to those 40 years, but at least it spreads your payments out. So it's, like I said, a lot lower of an impact on the taxpayer. And I usually equate it to, you know, a lot of people have 30-year mortgages, they'd love to have 15, but 30 is a little bit more affordable than your typical budget.
Typically, what are the 40-year rates?
Actually, I've got that information here. Right now, the 40-year market rate is 2.875. There's no credit rated, rating needed. We'll do bonds under $1 million. We can do amortized payments are typically not offered under public bonding. The costs are a little less. And we have, if we're using smaller contracts, there's less involved in it. So this kind of just gives you an overview of some of the advantages to go through the program. The next one shows the interest rate. As I said, it's, you would get the market rate, which is the lowest of the three rates, which is 2.875. It's a fixed rate, but this rate is set quarterly. So this quarter will end June 30th. Once you actually, we obligate a loan, you're locked into whatever the rate is. So if you, if we lock, if you, if we obligated your loan this month, you'd be locked in at 2.875. And then, when you close the loan, if the rate is lower, you can choose between the lower of the two rates. So the two important dates is the date you, we actually obligate the funds for the project and the date we closed. And as I said, you have the option of locking into either rate. But it is a fixed rate at that point. I gave a couple of examples. I know this is kind of a large one I just had on hand. It's $11.5 million. It's a large project. But it kind of shows the 20 versus 40. It shows the level principle as well as level payment. So we offer either payment method, depending on which would work best with the town and its budgeting. This kind of just gives an idea of what the payment schedule would be. As I said, it's a large loan, but I wasn't really sure what we were looking at. We can do a loan of any size. There is no minimum or maximum loan. The next, the next information is just an application packet. It's not a full packet. I brought some full packets. I can, I can leave a couple of those with whoever might be looking at putting an application together. We're very hands-on. We'll work directly with the individual, whether it be somebody from the town. A lot of times, if it's a facility, we'll be working a lot with the architect. Or if it's underwater and waste, we're working a lot directly with the engineer typically. So this just gives an idea of what's involved in an application. It's typical information that you'd be providing if you were getting a public bond as well. And then there's also information on preliminary architectural feasibility reports, what would be involved in that. And this would be the information you'd pass on to your architect. Funding, the funding is amply available. We do not have like an application window. You can apply anytime. You can apply for as many projects as you want. We would just want to know what your priority is. The only, like I say, we have plenty of funding right now, but we run on a, the federal budget October 1st is our budget season. So, you know, if there's a delay in passing the budget, sometimes it may be a delay in getting funding in the beginning of the fiscal year. Are there any specific questions on that?
So you have 20 and 40 here, but is 30 an option?
Yeah, that was just an example.
Okay. I'm just asking, because we have a $4 million difference between the two. And I know over 40 years, but that's, it's almost our.
I just kind of compared that, because most towns will do a 20 and we do a 40. So I just compared the two. But yeah, you can do a 30.
Four million difference, so. Okay.
And then, one of the questions that I had was about programs, grant programs, say specifically for identifying a potential need. So say the town was interested in at least examining a, some sort of wastewater treatment facility. My understanding is that there's feasibility, there's grants for feasibility studies that then could be applied for, but then this, what we just discussed would be like on the construction side, the loans.
Yeah. There's a pre-development grant program, which is specifically for that purpose, to look at a water and waste project. We don't have a program for that, for that, for like a facility, like if you wanted to do a feasibility study or something on building a town hall. Any of the engineering and any of the costs can be included in the loan, but in the actual loan, it has to be a complete project. So if you're going to do a new town hall, you know, with all the preliminary architectural expenses and all the engineering, architectural, all those expenses could be included in the loan, but we'd be looking at the full project. But under the water and waste program, we have a pre-development grant that you can apply for, to do a study on whether it would be feasible to do a treatment plan.
So our most immediate need is a town hall. Water and sewer is, it's a project that's just being brought up. So the town hall is immediate because of the structure here. My question is, is say we go in and we get the structure, we get the new town hall, we build that, we have this loan. Say down the road, we decide water or sewer or both. Can we reapply for a second? There's no limit on how many loans?
You can apply for as many. You could apply for, you know, a new cruiser, a new town hall, a water and waste. You can have as many applications in at a time. If they're within the same program, we're trying to look at priority and funding to some extent, like what's your first, what's your main priority if you're looking at community facilities or water and waste, you know? And if it's, if you can phase projects, like your water and waste, you may be doing a certain section of town and then do another phase, as long as it's a complete project. But you can phase them if you want to break them down. But yeah, you can, you can apply for as many projects as you want. We have towns that have, you know, 10, 12 loans with us.
Okay.
And as I said, you can pay them off or, you know, refinance them, make additional payments. It's very flexible on what you can do with them, as long as you pay them.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I imagine that to pursue a town hall, we need to get it all together, get an architect and get the project all defined.
In the folder, I have my business card and I also have Jim Lavin, who is my loan specialist that would actually process the application. Any information you want or any help you need, you can let me know. But he would be the actual individual that would work with the individual that would process you putting the actual application together.
So best-case scenario, we apply, we get it. Worst-case, is there, is there a worst case? Do you turn people away? And if so, what reasons would that be for?
Very rarely will we turn a town away, because, like I say, there's no, we don't require any bond, any kind of ratings or anything like that. The only thing is, in cautioning you, if you're going to do a, obviously, a community facility is going to have to have an elevator if it has more than one, you know? So obviously, it has to be accessible, you know? And that's, that's a given. We've run into that problem with that a couple of times with fire stations, because they'll say that, you know, the firefighters are going to just sleep upstairs, but you still need to have, you know, in federal regulations, we require it be accessible to all people. We've run into some problems with that. Other than that, most town halls, if they're doing renovations or rebuilds, they're putting in elevators anyways.
They think of wheelchairs. They don't think of all disabilities.
Right, right.
So I understand that.
And there's employees that, you know, may not be fighting fires that still may be working for the facilities.
Mr. W.
Do you offer short-term programs too, like really short-term programs? The reason I'm asking is, is one of the situations we're in right now is, we have a great deal of Chapter 90 available to us from the state, because it's been accruing over the last few years. And one of the ways that we want to be able to spend that is to borrow against it, to do those road infrastructure projects and then pay it back with the Chapter 90 reimbursement. Do you offer a program like that?
Typically, what you're doing, as it is, you're getting interim financing. You're getting short-term financing until the end of construction and paying it off. So you'd already be kind of getting that short-term, right? So I don't really know if that would really be an advantage.
Okay.
But like I say, I mean, you can pay something off at any time. So there's no limit to that.
What is the timeline of typical loan?
You mean, as far as getting it all? It's going to really depend on your architect, your engineer or something. You've got to get all the information. You've got to do all the work. So it's kind of depends on their time, timeline. Other than that, the processing, like right now, especially for community facilities, there's plenty of money for that program. It's underutilized. Our water and waste money for this fiscal year is pretty much spoken for. So if you want to look at water, water or waste program, you might want to try to get an application. You can file at any time, you know, so we can have applications on hand. But water, a water or a sewer project would probably go into, after October 1st into the next fiscal year. But community facilities, there's plenty of funds for that.
Because I'm thinking that the architect, engineering, those are going to have to be town meeting votes along with this. So that wouldn't be until November to be prepared.
You can start the process and then you'll obviously need the vote before you can actually obligate funds, but you can start the application process.
Right.
And the first thing you'd want to do is have your architect look at this little sheet here, the preliminary architectural information, which is the last on the right of the packet.
That's the model. That's okay, though.
And I actually have, like I said, a couple of full applications. And I can also send this electronically, but this actually has all the forms in it. And this is also just, I just brought this for information. It's a toolkit that just kind of talks about going through municipal infrastructure toolkit, secondly, as well.
Joe, is planning, planning to bring the master plan to meet your goal of September, I mean, November?
Oh, over, basically over the next month and a half to have it complete, so that basically the planning board and board of selectmen can then at least have meetings just to present it and then make any final, final changes to the document before town meeting. So right now, the hallmark that the board and I have been doing, and we met last, last meeting about it, is that the public facilities, summary of the needs of, say, the fire police, senior center, recreation, this building's fairly, fairly easy. However, need to try to get a little bit more information out of the building committee to find out, like what the specific needs are. I've talked with Lincoln Barber briefly about it, but getting information about those processes, those, those boards, those facilities' needs is really just one of the last things to do. Right now, I'm just making sure all the tables are matching, the text and all that stuff to try to pull everything together. But it's really just the community facilities, which board members have volunteered to sort of follow up with other boards to get that. So of course, like Steve is easily able to get fire and police. John Hadley is working with Brian Malali to identify what's needed on the highway side. We have members on council on aging, so they're pulling that together. I'm trying to, going to try to reach out to Steve behind me just to see as far as from Millville Elementary and what we're needing on the school side. You know, like, for example, the master plan demographics are already showing that Millville has an aging population. Those age groups, as they're going, as we go through the years, the number of people 55 and over continues to grow. So in the next 10 years, that's going to be a significant portion of the population. And it's been growing over the last 20. Identifying from the council on aging what they need as far as expanded programs, expanded transportation, any facility needs. Those are things that we just need that direct information from boards and committees in order to flesh out the community facilities section. So essentially, the intent is for me to provide the board with the draft plan. And those items may be some of the missing pieces by the end of the month, only because, you know, we're getting close to vacation as far as just can we collect that information? We can do it, no matter what, we can cover it. It's just, could we get maybe a little bit more detail, maybe? But that's something that then can also receive feedback, say, from council on aging in case the draft doesn't specifically get into as much detail as someone would want.
Sounds like a lot.
It is. And that's where, one of the main, main things is that, thinking back to the 96 plan, using CMRPC funds as well as town funds, that only addressed about two chapters. So we're trying to address, I'm trying to address and the board's trying to address all nine chapters that are within a master plan, so that we are taking care of housing, open space, recreation. We even met with a member of the park and rec committee at our last meeting to talk about park space and needs for playground equipment. So we're pulling together the, the, sort of like those stragglers that really just are identifying exactly what police and fire need.
You're familiar with Senate Bill 2311?
Yes.
How's that going to impact our master plan and the zoning issues?
Well, that's, one of the main thing is that, that, that bill is basically mandating community master planning across, across the state. And realistically, they're probably going to be incentivizing that, towns like the Community Compact. You get credit for one thing, if you have these things in place. All the elements that are identified within the existing 40A for, for being in a master plan are already being covered. So there isn't some new element that would be thrown in there that then this plan would not address. The main thing is that the language is, that's currently being considered, has a lot of as-of-right provisions for multifamily housing, designating areas where that area should be, where those areas should be located within towns. That is already within the master plan as far as that we need to look at the center revitalizing existing housing stock, infill, to strengthen the walking ability within the Village Center. And that goes at hand with the need for, for infrastructure. Without the infrastructure, basically, multifamily housing would have to go on large lots, because you'd have to accommodate it onsite. That would have a significant impact on the aesthetics in Millville. You know, I think the, the market would be the biggest dictator, though, as far as whether that is realized. That's where that gets harder, when you can't tie into municipal and you're building it. That cost to do multifamily gets, starts going up there.
I'm also concerned about the resource needed. The, from what I read in this bill, that the town's going to have to conform to the state requirements and change bylaws.
Right.
Within three years.
Yeah. So for example, there's language about as-of-right multifamily. Right now, we allow multifamily in the Village Center with the most recent changes by way of special permit. That basically becomes a Y permitted. So the issues are easily addressed, but for some towns, you know, a lot of towns will allow multifamily only through special permit or maybe site plan. I think site plan, which then is as-of-right, but with revealing the characteristics of the site, that would probably be fine. But a lot of these are also awaiting for rules that DHCD will be putting together to really identify how you're going to be complying. But there are some, some concerning provisions that basically DHCD could deem whether or not a town is in compliance and then could basically allow multifamily housing to go in even in not in conforming with existing town zoning bylaws. But those are all things that at least the foundation for making those zoning changes are already in the, in the draft, because it's been recommendations that CMRPC and looking at the Village Area has already recommended to allow for that higher density.
Do we have to add any resource, financial, to see this through?
You mean, as far as, as it relates to that, that existing bill? No, I mean, the main thing ends up being really future zoning changes to bring into compliance some of the recommendations of, of the master plan. But we've actually done a lot over the last couple of years to mainly address a lot of those, so that literally it's changing within the Village Center district or the community business district and ask special permit to a P, which would be site plan review. And that's just amending a table. Other than that, the, the master plan is basically identifying that Millville was set up as a mill village. The higher density was to support the mills. It's a historic development pattern that should be encouraged and enhanced. And that's the basis for, for like that multifamily provision that's being proposed. You have other towns that, let's use Grafton, for example, will have to amend our, our master plan and our zoning to maybe address that a little bit more detail, because our master plan is 16 years old and didn't address that. And, you know, that's, that's a separate concern we have, because we, we have a lot more development pressures. And fortunately or unfortunately, Millville has, has some single-family growth over the last 10 years, but it really hasn't been, been much. A lot of the development and identified in the draft that you did receive back end of February. I did have information on units that were created over the last 30 years. And while the percentage in Millville is high, when you have a low number of buildings, you know, 40 units represents almost a 40% increase compared to having 3,000 units that over the same period that may be meant and had. So we've been a little bit more modest and some of these provisions are scaring a lot of, of the larger towns. And they are concerning here, but I think that we are, we do have the foundation in the draft plan that we have already, as well as the zoning we've recently enacted.
So what you're saying is, we're good?
We're good. I think there's, there's a lot of concerns from municipalities in general about I think there's, there's a lot of concerns from municipalities in general about having as-of right multifamily and the impact on schools and finances. I think that's where the main concern is. From a zoning perspective and a master plan perspective, we're okay, but then it still comes down to the, the policy and the municipal finance question as far as is that a direction that really is in the best interest? And unfortunately, there's been a lot of recent lobbying from the builders, unions and, in order to put in some of these, because in the most recent changes, this language was not there and has caught a lot of planners by surprise that it's, that it's there.
I'm gonna switch a little. With Eric Smith going into the private sector, does that affect our relationship with CMRPC?
No, it doesn't. We're still dealing with Chris Ryan, who basically oversaw the whole community development program. He stays in place and, and basically oversees the planners that then work for CMRPC. So, I've been most recently working with a lady named Dominique, and she's very capable and basically finished up the, the Millville Center Plan that then the board had most recently, last month, basically signed off on. So, I, I, I trust in, in their capabilities, and it's still falling under the same overall direction.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone have questions?
I, I'd just like to say that we, we do work with a lot of municipalities in their, your master plan and, and developing that and working with it. We have thirty-two different loan and grant programs. We do single-family, multifamily businesses, so we have a lot of different financing tools that can be utilized to develop into the plan, so if you're all, if you're ever interested, we'd be very happy to come and talk to you or groups about different financing of different types of programs.
I'll probably just be calling.
Roll, you, sit.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
If you have any questions, give me a call. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And then just while, before I go, this summary of goals and objectives. I can distribute this electronically if you'd like, it would be easier, but one thing that I love is to get some feedback from the Board of Selectmen as far as whether or not they look good, is there anything missing, you know, scribble on it, drop it off in my mailbox or, or whatever, but just wanna make sure that as we're, as finalized in the document that any input that maybe you have that you've seen through being on the Board of Selectmen that maybe we on the plan board have not seen gets reflected and put in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn this portion of this meeting.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
We'll, we'll re-adjourn after about a fifteen-minute break for the regular seven o'clock meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Monday, June sixth, seven PM Board of Selectmen Meeting. I hereby call this meeting an order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God and the universal liberty of the Constitution of the great.
This is a, we have a special guest with us this evening. His name is Maui. He's the top dog in Millville. He wears the tag number one. I'd like to present award to Maui.
Thank you for coming.
Millville's top dog.
Thank you.
Next, approval of minutes. Motion on May sixteen at seven PM.
Motion to approve May sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, seven PM minutes.
Second that. Roll.
Aye.
Aye. May nineteenth, twenty sixteen, at five forty-five PM.
Motion to approve May nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, at five forty-five PM.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Delara Epstein's?
Yes, Epstein. Minutes of June first, twenty sixteen, at six PM.
Motion to approve minutes of June first, two thousand sixteen, at six PM.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is invited guest speakers and presenters. Boards and committees and departments, Janet and I used the Blackstone Millville School, School Committee and Superintendent Ellen Himmberger and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Thompson. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
And thanks very much for having us. As everyone probably knows, at the Blackstone Town Meeting last Tuesday, May thirty-first, they voted an additional contribution of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which would equate to a hundred and eighty-three thousand, and the, for the town of Millville, the school committee did recertify to the lower number last Wednesday, and I dropped off to Mrs. Coffin and to everyone that copies up the recertification of that budget. And unfortunately, I've gotten very familiar with MGL seventy-one sixteen B and six oh three, forty-one oh five, but we are now looking for the next steps so that we can get a, an approved budget to start our fiscal year. So, I would certainly open up if there are any questions, but the request would certainly be for a special town meeting as soon as possible so that we could put this to a vote.
So, so the timing on this is that within the next fourteen days, we should, the objective is to open a warrant this evening. Within fourteen days' schedule.
The warrant has to be open for fourteen days?
I think you'd want to, right, call for the special town meeting tonight, right? Though my understanding is the warrant itself does not need to be open for fourteen days. But I can certainly.
It's in our bylaws.
I'm sorry?
It's in our bylaws. Our bylaws say fourteen, and actually state law says fourteen.
Okay.
And seven for annual, but Millville has done fourteen for both in our bylaws. I have a copy. I think I printed it out, our bylaws. Yep. Warrant for town meetings, fourteen days before posting.
Okay.
So, we have to have it open for fourteen?
If that's, yeah, I don't have the bylaw in front of me. But that's what you're saying.
And then, yep, you can pass that down to her, and then fourteen there, so what we're looking at is twenty-eight, twenty-eight plus six is beyond. So, the other option.
My point is fourteen is fourteen.
Our bylaws state, well, actually, state law states that your warrant has to be posted fourteen days before the meeting, and they're saying our warrant has to be open for fourteen days.
Before posting.
Before posting.
So, two years ago, how did we get, June thirtieth?
Maybe Blackstone met earlier than.
No, there was the day, I don't believe it was Memorial Day.
Yeah, but I'm saying Memorial Day might have been the twenty-fourth. Do you know what I mean?
Two years ago, it was.
Because it's not a, a firm, it's not like July fourth, that's a floating.
Two years ago, Memorial Day was early.
You know, I mean, so we're looking beyond that, so I think at this point, your, the bylaw for, you just said seventy-one sixteen B, states that your committee can call their meeting together in fourteen days, and that's gonna get you done prior to.
Just to be clear, the ramifications of not having a budget by June thirtieth, well, by June fifteenth, are certainly that we have to lay off in order to be prepared for all part possibilities. If we don't have one by June thirtieth, then I have to get in touch with the Department of Ed, and then they give us a one-twelfth budget of our current year, which greatly impacts our ability to move forward.
I apologize. I'm, I'm not seeing where you saw that the warrant has to be open for fourteen days. I understand the fourteen-day.
No, I asked you how long it needed to be open, and you said fourteen.
Oh, no, I, I.
Has to be posted.
It has to be posted for fourteen.
It can be open for two minutes. I mean, you own the warrant. To my knowledge, there's, there's nothing that says that there's a fourteen-day requirement for that, no.
The only other lead time as far as I know would be the amount of time that the constable would take to, to warn the inhabitants.
Right.
So, if that's a day or two, then we're looking at maybe sixteen to doubt, which would be Wednesday, the twenty-second, if that's not the preferred day, Monday, the twenty-seventh would still get us in.
I'd rather see the twenty-second, if possible.
Yeah, that would too.
There's always speed bumps.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Chairman, in anticipation of this, I did check with the town moderator, the town clerk, and a member of the finance committee, who I was able to get in touch with, and it appears that June twenty-seventh would be the best date as far as schedules are concerned. The town moderator is unavailable earlier, and the town clerk is unavailable later, and then the week of July fourth is not very convenient for many people, so if you were to ask for a recommendation, my recommendation to the board would be for June twenty-seventh. And I have checked with Mrs. O'Neil up at the school, and the auditorium is available that evening as well.
So, I would entertain a motion to post for a meeting on the twenty-seventh.
So moved.
To deal with the budget.
Seven PM Monday, or six-thirty for special.
One article?
Yeah, one article, do six-thirty.
For the budget, for the BMR regional budget.
The BMR regional budget. Can we have a second?
Does that work?
Well, I, I agree with Mr. Barrett. The twenty-second is preferred, but if folks aren't available, then the twenty-seventh is certainly the next best, and we can make that work.
Well, I didn't know if your committee had opted or thought about doing a district-wide meeting.
Well, that, I, I believe the committee was hoping that this evening, that the board would, would offer a date that would be early enough so that we wouldn't have to.
Because I know at, at the Blackstone presentation, it was said that last time this happened, because the meeting went so late, you had to pink slip and you lost staff. So, therefore, what is your date for that pink slipping procedure?
June fifteen.
So, even with, if you were to call it, you're still beyond that date.
Yes, and I think.
I think you're right, though, when Mr. Davis was here, it was June thirtieth was the meeting, it was like the drop dead.
Right, that was two years ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I mean, it can be done, but.
Right.
Try not to.
But certainly, the twenty-seventh would work, and then we would, we would hope that there would be a quorum and that folks would understand the predicament that we are in.
Well, if that's what we got to, if those are the cards we gotta play with, that's...
So, is there a second on my?
I have a second to deal with the budget.
Any more discussion? So, we can go to the consuls.
For clarification purposes, I just wanna make sure I have Mr. Barrett's motion correct. That's to call for a special town meeting on June twenty-seventh at six-thirty and to open the warrant immediately.
Yep.
At this point, we know we have one article specifically dealing with the BMR budget. Are we keeping the warrant open any longer, or is it the boards wish to close the warrant effective immediately as well?
We'll do that after we vote to open, aye? Or can we put it as part of the motion to open, aye?
All right, yep, to open, aye, close tonight.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Second, second amendment.
Roll.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I do have a comment. In over the last ten years, our special, the balance of our special fund, fund balances, they've diminished by approximately one point six million dollars. We're basically funding our budgets with free cash. The point that I bring up here is that we gotta do something different next year, because the rate we're going now, it's non-sustainable. We're using resource, and at some point, we've gotta do something, and I'm really concerned, I mean, in that regard.
And I think I, I'm speaking for all of us. We spoke at our six o'clock meeting, you guys were here, about building our infrastructure, and we understand that the children, that you people are educated, are someday gonna be operating our infrastructure that we're trying to build now. So, we understand that, and we know how important it is to invest in the children as, as well as our infrastructure. But as you know, the, the dollar is the, is the governing source of everything. And, you know, we do, do our best to make sure that the schools are funded and then as well as all of our other services, and unfortunately, as you know, because schools deal with the same unfunded mandates by the federal and state governments.
One, one last comment. The, the money we have to run town government in two thousand and six was two and a half million dollars to run town government. That basically hasn't changed since two thousand and six. So, all that extra growth in education costs has held, held us back. Mr. Gravold?
Richard Gravold, chairman, finance committee, at least until June thirtieth. We talked before the town, our town meeting with all of you, and we told you how difficult it was going to be to come up with an additional sixty-something thousand. We were pretty clear about it on the town meeting floor as well. It didn't seem to resonate with you or the rest of the committee. The money is not there. We are going to have to take significant cuts from our budget that we've already passed to come up with that sixty thousand dollars. I've already tried to take a cursory look and see where we're gonna come up with it. I could only come up with twenty-five, one day. So, we're probably gonna have to either take it out of police and fire or dismantle our capital program to do this, because I don't think you're gonna get a two-thirds vote to take it out of stabilization at this point. The townspeople of Millville were pretty clear about that. In fact, we even waited. We tabled the stabilization budget item until after we talked about our budget, to give it an opportunity to, because if it went in before that, it was never gonna come out. We were honest brokers, and we, we tried to wait it, and the people said no. Yet, you didn't get that, you went to Blackstone, now you're forcing us into a position where we're gonna have to cut police, we're gonna have to cut fire, and it pains me to do that. We're gonna have to cut our capital budget to almost nothing this year. Because we... Because we don't want to sacrifice our future, and we can't sustain this next year. We really can't. We told you that on the floor. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and we can't do it again next year. Yet, next year, you're gonna come back and ask for another big increase on top of it. Wasn't a hundred and twenty thousand dollar additional contribution enough? How, when is enough enough? It's time we end this, and I'm not through yet, sir. It's time we end this. It's time that you come to us with a budget that we can afford. Because we can't afford this additional sixty thousand dollars. And I'm sorry that you came here tonight to do this to us, to do this to this town, to the three of you to do this to this town, the town you live in. Yeah, this is my last hurrah, but, and it pains me, it pains me deeply to see you do this to us. See you do this to us year after year. We're scratching by with what we've got, and we don't have much. And we're trying to make it better, but we can't keep doing what you make us do every year. We cannot afford it. When is enough enough? Thank you.
First of all, Mr. Gravelo, nobody understands town finance and town budgeting as well as I do. But I am paid to watch out for the best interests of seventeen-hundred-and-fifty students and their tax-paying families. I'm not doing anything to anyone. I'm trying to cobble together a school budget with a one-point-one percent increase. With all that we have on our plates, one-point-one percent increase total to our general fund is a very, very small number. And I believe that we will do things differently next year. And that is certainly to try and let folks understand that we focus on just one number every year, and that's additional contribution. But that's only one piece of the entire school budget. The additional contribution, yes, is greater than zero, and yes, was five thousand dollars more than last year's. But in terms of the total budget to run our school district, if the town votes sixty-three thousand dollars, that's a one-point-one percent increase to our general fund budget. And part of our problem is we had five of the preceding ten years where the school budget was decreased. That unevenness caused us a lot of setbacks. And I believe that everyone wants a strong school system with a strong school district. If you get a chance to watch on cable the graduation ceremony last Friday night, and listen to Griffin Riley, a Millville resident, speak eloquently about education and about what it means to be a part of these two towns. And I, I know that I speak sometimes without a deep sense of one history, but I'm invested in both towns.
Mr. Himmelberger. Additional sixty-three thousand dollars is gonna put us in deficit by over a half a million dollars. That's the reality.
And it's also a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short of what the school committee voted as the right number to manage our schools next year. So we are doing without as well. We are also planning to increase our revenue by renting space to the collaborative.
My point is, we've been doing this year after year after year. What are we gonna be doing differently? Do we have to restructure the district or do something else? Mrs. Van Acco.
I'm Erin Van Acco. I'm the chair of the school committee. I have no intentions of speaking this evening. However, I'm gonna answer to Mr. Gravelo, because I think we've gotten a bad rap for quite some months now, and we need to stick up for ourselves, because we are here from the same town. From the same town, we are all dedicating our time to these committees for us, for the schools, you, for the town, finance. We are all in the same, working towards the same goal here. And if it's our job to look out for the schools and the kids, it's not fair that you're gonna come to us and say, "You got, you're the bad guys because you need this much money." It shouldn't be falling just on our shoulders if it's that, if it's that much of a burden on the town of Millville.
I understand.
You can say that sixty-three thousand dollars is going to put you at a half a million dollars debt, but we sat at our town meeting and watched the money get moved into stabilization that was held off, that if it had been recommended by FinCom, it probably would have passed on the town floor. And we sat respectfully in your meetings, letting you know exactly why we needed that money. We sat respectfully with the majority of you a half an hour before that town meeting, and you knew we were doing it. So don't make it sound like we're the bad guys. We are here doing what we need to do for our committee and the kids in this district. It's, and, and that is what we're elected to do. If we weren't doing it, then we'd be the bad guy. Okay? Over four hundred thousand dollars went into different accounts that night. And I'm not here to tell you how to spend your money, but I'm here to tell you what we need for our committee. And respectfully, it's not enough, but this is what we're gonna settle for. And respectfully, I don't think it's fair that we're the bad guys. And I would really like an apology for that statement.
Well, Madam Chair, I didn't call you the bad one. I told you at that pre-meeting, we didn't have the money. Now, if that money that went into stabilization was a surplus that we had in operating funds, all the power to it, but it wasn't. It wasn't. It was what was from free cash. It came from many different places. It was one-time sources. And I said it that night. I said it over and over again. And next year, it's gonna be the same thing. No, you're not the bad people. No, you're not. But you're presenting us a budget we can't accommodate. We tried. We tried, and we can't.
So I just want to add one more thing, I'm sorry. In fact, that we didn't, we did not leave that meeting and go to Blackstone. Blackstone had our budget exactly the same time we did. We did not change anything. They had, we, they knew the amount. They, they had that on their FinCom way before Millville's town meeting. So we didn't go to them and say, "You need to do this for us so Millville can, can have to pay up." And, and I see, everyone else sees it on social media. That is not the case. They had our certified budget, and they're here just as you did. So I, I just feel that you're, you're saying we're go, we went to Blackstone, and we're sitting here tonight doing this to you. We don't wanna be in this position.
And the comments that were made at that school committee meeting, after our town meeting, you should be apologizing to us for some of the comments that were made by all members. And Mr. Himmelberger, you shouldn't have allowed that to take place during that meeting.
Actually, I'm the chair. I run that meeting, Rich. And I watched it several times to find out what, what comments you were talking about. Do you want to discuss that after this and let me know, because I haven't been able to find them. We respectfully were disappointed in our town. It had nothing to do with.
Let me put this arrest. Just a quick correction to Mr. Gravelo, who I have the utmost respect for, the work that you do. Those aren't my meetings. I work for the school committee. Those are their meetings. I am the humble superintendent at those meetings. I don't have any say or sway in how those meetings are run.
And right now, we're.
And as we all are. We all are.
Bottom line, if you, you look at the cost of education for both towns, per capita, it's about a thousand dollars for every student. It's about a thousand dollars, and it's equal, Blackstone and Millville. The point is, is that these, these changes have... You okay, John?
I'm fine, go.
The point is, is that to run our government, per capita, it costs about seven hundred and seventy-five dollars per person. Blackstone is a little flush. You get about a million five fifty to run town government. We're, we're right down at bare bones.
And for the record, we're not just complaining about the school. We're complaining about Norfolk Abbey. Every time we get a state rep or an air in here, we're discussing that. We're discussing the transportation. We're talking about Tri-County. We don't have control over your budgets, so therefore, we have to go into our own well to do that. And it's frustrating when we, we put things back in place, our library, our senior center, and then those same type of, and unfunded mandates, you know, those are there too. And then we have to go back into our source and take away from the whole community. I have three kids in the system. They're all in the elementary school, so, and I'm a teacher, so I understand the importance of education, and I understand the ramifications of cuts and staffing and twenty-eight kids in a classroom, because I've been there. But as a whole town, you have to understand that it is very frustrating. It is very frustrating, because there are things that we cannot control and things that we don't have a say in, except for our one vote at town meeting. And it's a reoccurring. We go through ebbs and flows with school committees and superintendents that sometimes we have great working relationships and great dialogue, and then we have nothing. And then we, we get into this, which is not productive, type of environment, and then we, we fix it and we go. But it's always this reoccurring theme between, and it's been like this for probably since the eighties or seventies, or someone can correct me, and Norm, you can correct me. It goes all the way back, I'm sure. But we need, it needs, we need for it to be better. But you have to understand that when these things happen, you're hurting our whole town. I know you're providing for the children what you have been hired to do, but you are hurting our whole town.
Mrs. Reggio?
I think, I think that as a Jane review, and I'm also a member of the school committee and a Millville resident, and a very proud Millville resident, but I don't have the history that a lot of you have in this town. But ever since I have moved into this town, have done my best to be on the library committee, to be on the cultural committee, to be on the school committee, to be on the best, I have done my best to volunteer and be a part of this community. And I believe that I said at the end of the town meeting to thank everybody for their participation, because it was important. Regardless of the way you felt, it was important to participate. And I believe those were my words. So I don't find any offense in that, and, and if you do, I apologize for that. But I do think it is important, but I do think it's important to have dialogue before a town meeting. Because the plain fact of the matter is, you're saying that sixty-three thousand means five hundred, a half a million dollars. When we got our needs for the school committee, before we even went to the towns, we had to cut a half a million dollars. So we get it. We get it. But the plain fact of the matter is, there isn't enough, enough money. That's the bottom line. There isn't enough money. So what do we do? And I think it's time for the town and the school and the finance committee and people to talk together instead of yelling at each other, because that feels like what we're doing. And we gotta talk together from the beginning to say, "How do we do it?" And we gotta either build, go back to the planning committee, and we gotta build homes in this community so we increase our tax base, or we gotta raise our tax base. And I know nobody wants to hear that, and I know that that's not gonna happen in Millville. But the plain fact of the matter is, the school has needs that have not been met that eventually have to be met. And so maybe the, the discussion needs to be, where does our, where is our regional agreement? What, what do we do? I mean, what, do we bring in another town? Do we get rid of it? Whatever it is. And so, Millville residents, we need to have those discussions. We can't just argue with each other after the fact.
I'm known for being very vocal at these meetings. I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna go at you. I'm not gonna go at you. That's not productive. But what I'd like to, to explain, and there, it is not a mystery that there is not a good relationship between Blackstone and Millville as of late. And, and it's probably been going on for a very long period of time. The problem is, there's an old adage that says, "Change is only as strong as its weakest link." Millville cannot afford the monies that you're asking for, that were, that you're asking for to, to run the school budget. Not because we don't understand the need, not because we don't recognize that there is a need. Blackstone can afford it, because they're flush with cash, because quite frankly, they're overtaxing their citizens. We're not doing that. But they vote at their meeting because they don't care. The money's there. There you go. Sure, whatever you need. We don't have that luxury. We don't have the ability to do that. So there needs to be a way that we need to find to work together to come up with those numbers and those total numbers based on what one of your two towns can afford, specifically the one that can afford the least. That's where the starting point needs to be, not the one that can afford the most. It needs to be at the one that can afford the least and go from there. And a, a discussion needs to be had, and an agreement needs to be made between the boards and committees. Everybody needs to talk amongst themselves to figure out where, where is that break-even point between what Millville can afford, what we can give, what you need, whatever. But this isn't productive, and pitting one town against the other is basically what's happening here. Because, because quite frankly, and, and I said it openly, I feel like we're now being extorted to increase our amount because Blackstone voted for the full amount. And, and I don't like to feel that way. I wanna see this town move forward, but right now, this process here is actually a step backward. And I don't wanna see that happen.
I know we could debate all night. This process is set forth, forth in the Mass General laws. When a regional district cannot get a budget voted, we are simply following the process. I don't disagree with what you have said about communication early and often. But since I have been here, I've only tried to reach out to both towns and to both boards and to both committees, because I understand exactly what you said, Paul.
I think things are gonna change significantly going forward, because right now, Blackstone has a huge housing goal. There's gonna be a point in time where our school contribution is actually gonna go down from one year to the next, because our percentages are gonna change. So, so when that happens, this may go the other way. We might vote X amount of dollars, and then Blackstone will be on the hook when, at that point, they can't afford it. But, but that forward thinking needs to be able to happen between the two towns so that it's not, it's not what you can afford today. It's what you can afford to sustain going forward and in the future. And right now, today, we don't have it. And we have the, all these needs looming for the thirty-two-hundred residents of our town that we're responsible for putting all these numbers together for and sharing this very small pot as evenly and equitably as possible.
The last time we did this was for planning for fiscal twelve. And we went out for an override, and it was a cafeteria-type override question. Three issues: senior center, library, trash collection. Townspeople didn't support the library nor the senior center. We lost the director at the senior center plus the van.
Oh, the van was another one.
The van didn't get voted off.
That was another, that was another issue.
Library was decertified. We did get a trash collection in an override. But we were, basically at that time, we're at the same point we are in now. Coincidentally, our, our budget was, for the town was like two point six. That's where it is now.
I think we're pretty much taxed to the levy limit now. There is very little excess levy capacity, if any.
Oh, yeah, no.
I think it's less than a dollar a thousand.
We've been levying for ten years.
Yeah, so there's, there's no, nothing else we can do either.
Anyway, we're beating a dead horse, huh?
Beating a dead horse, okay. One, yeah.
So the meeting's set?
Meeting's set for the twenty-seventh.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Public forum. Mr. Finn? Mr. Finn.
Just one question I have. You said the meeting, I think, you said you won't have it at six-thirty. Uh, is that a reason for that?
Usually when we have a special, it's at six-thirty. And it's the beginning of school vacations, people are gonna wanna go camping. Let's get it done early in the evening so they can be on their way down to the Cape or wherever they're headed.
Okay.
'Cause the Fourth of July is the following weekend. That's what I'm thinking.
Right.
'Cause when, when we had a June thirtieth meeting, we just barely made the forum on an important issue like this.
And that was at six-thirty?
And the seventh, but it was June thirtieth.
I thought it was six-thirty. Yeah. I just had, I just had, uh, the reason I mentioned it, it's too late, I just thought of bringing it forward. Uh, I had a couple of people say to me, "What the hell, why don't we have it at six-thirty? Can we have it later?" I don't get home from work. I mean, I'm just voicing what I heard at the last time I go to the meeting. They said, "I can't make it to six-thirty, but I'll try to be there for the seven." I'm not gonna be home.
Or you might be sitting there for seven, waiting for the quorum.
Yeah.
Well, I, that may be very true. I'm just suggesting that sometimes when people see six-thirty and they're not anywhere within their shot by six-thirty, they're just gonna say...
If, if I remember correctly, it was like, we started that meeting like twenty minutes late, waiting for the quorum.
It doesn't matter. I'm only saying on a posted time, so that someone who wishes to participate knows they have to seven to try to beat it out of Austin to get here, as opposed to six-thirty and say, "Oh, my God, man." I had some people, I'd say, three or four people came to me and said, "I couldn't make it to six-thirty. I just couldn't get here, but I'll try to get to seven." That's all I'm saying.
I'm pretty sure that's not set until it's actually posted.
Well, I, I just, I just brought it forward, because I had people say to me, "Why don't you make it a little later on, and try to all get there?" So, I'm just telling them.
I made my motion within the hour.
Please, please do so.
You have to let the meeting close, is...
Man, I don't, the thing is, if you're doing it only because that's the way we've all done it, not a good enough reason to do it. If we're doing it so because we wanna get a fair representation of as many people who would like to participate at seven o'clock, till we get a good vote and a good cross-section, I would rather favor that. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Barrett amended his motion to seven.
Everything stays the same, with, with the exception of the time I'll change till seven. That's my motion.
Second.
I'll second the change.
Roll.
Aye.
Seven o'clock.
Mr. Thor.
I've got a question. Yes.
I got a question that may be redundant, but suppose you don't get a quorum?
Reconvene.
Post turn on fourteen?
Would you need forty?
Don't worry, parents will come out.
If you don't get a quorum, I guess we'll go nowhere that night. Simple logic.
Let's say, go, go it down again.
That's correct.
Then it goes to a district-wide.
Yeah. Then it's a, a super, a super-town meeting.
And that's our one-on-one vote?
Hmm.
Yep.
So, they get three times as many people as we do, and we gotta get everybody, everybody from the rafters out of there. Down, right?
Yeah. Fire up the senior there. Get people there.
Let's move on.
Yep.
I think at some point before this meeting, there's gotta be some discussions between the selectmen and the finance committee as to where this money could come from.
Good, so, who do you wanna do? Hmm? Who do you wanna go?
Everyone available Thursday? Could we post something for Thursday?
This Thursday?
No. What's the date?
The ninth could be this Thursday.
Ninth? I can do that. Yeah?
A week, Monday?
I mean, you have till the twenty-seventh to actually sit down and figure it all out.
Well, the finance committee will need to hold its public hearing the week before. I suspect on the twenty-second, they'll have to have an answer as to where it's coming from at that, at that time.
So, I would say nowhere than the Monday.
Do Monday, the thirteenth?
We have a joint meeting. Thursday or Monday? I'm, I'm good on both.
Monday, Paul.
Monday, yeah. Yeah, I can't hear, it's the wedding, right?
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, a week from today.
You gotta go to that?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, Thursday's saying the thirteenth?
Time, Mr. Chairman?
Seven?
Seven? Does that work federal?
Saturday's seven.
It's coming, yeah, seven.
Okay.
You're saying that the thirteenth is seven?
Yeah.
FinCom and BOS. Oh, when is the warrant? So, we'll see.
It'll be next week.
I'm saying, I have it in my calendar to come in.
It's supposed to be Friday, that it'll be done by then?
Have it signed.
It's Friday, right?
Nope, it's Monday.
On Monday. Monday.
I have a question for this, and when will you have the warrant ready?
I could have it ready.
Tonight.
Yeah, tonight.
I can post it anytime you want. I'm there. I won't be available tomorrow morning.
Well, I think what I'm going to do, the board will have to sign it. I think what I'll do is I'll add on Monday's, um, I'll add on Monday's agenda. That won't be posted for fourteen? Yeah. We might have to have a quick meeting first. We might have to have a quick meeting prior to the thirteenth, if we want to post it. To accept the warrant, sign it, so it can be posted on the thirteenth.
And we could do, we can. Thursday night?
Thursday night. Paul won't be, well...
We don't need him.
We do it.
We won't need them. We just gotta sign the warrant.
Thursday night.
Now, we're doing Thursday night?
Yeah.
Also.
Don't worry about, yeah.
Thursday, if I hear it.
Thursday's just to accept the warrant and sign it.
What time would you wanna do that?
Seven?
Seven, yeah.
Seven?
That'll be a fifteen-minute meeting, it's only one o'clock.
Make it five.
Huh?
I'm betting we can make it five.
Oh, oh, five minutes. I thought you meant five o'clock. I was like, well, five o'clock, I don't know about that, but...
Let's, let's move on. Correspondence?
There's another question, there's another issue.
Friday, that's, that's the tenth. I mean, Thursday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you sign the warrant, if you sign it on Thursday, every place that it has to be posted is not open on a Friday.
That's right. It just has to be posted Monday before seven, seven o'clock.
You have to get up early.
So, you could post, you could post some on Friday, and then you could post some on Monday.
But we can't, we can't physically meet till... To do it, till Thursday, because it's already Monday night.
I can do it anytime. But the place is gonna be open.
We have till Monday at seven P.M., because our meeting is seven P.M., fourteen days out. Ten minutes?
What about where you're at? They can sign up before they leave this meeting.
It's not on the warrant.
Tell whoever has to stand there.
Forty-eight hours from now is Wednesday night.
Yeah, I think that timing will work out fine. Mm-hmm.
We'll just make it.
Worst-case scenario, I can always, um, I can always accompany you Friday and let you into any building if you really need to get it done Friday, if you don't wanna wait until Monday. I have...
Well, I think the sooner it's posted, the better according to this.
It's just, what, the senior center?
The better, uh, the better chance, I guess, the better...
The library's open on Saturday.
I mean, I can make myself available on Friday at any time.
Appointments and resignations, Chief Landry?
I just have one. Unfortunately, he couldn't be with us tonight. But Stephen Masto-Giovanni. Giovanni.
Giovanni.
Uh, good candidate, works for Dudley, plenty of experience. A great addition to the police department. We added several part-time shifts. So, because we added all those part-time shifts, we simply need a couple more part-time patrolmen to fill those shifts. He's trained, he's ready to go. There's no expense to the town. Uh, he's training within the departments on his own time. His uniforms, all his equipment, he purchases all that. So, for this year, there's no, uh, cost for adding that additional part-timer. Uh, and like I said, we have an abundance of part-time shifts that have to be filled. And right now, we're just running with six part-timers. So, I'd like to get that number up to seven or eight. And that way, we have sufficient manpower to fill the shifts. Doesn't make sense to have the additional shifts, but not enough people to fill the shifts. So, if we can go to, um, probably one more after this, we'll have sufficient amount of people working. He has a good background, everything checked out well. He's eager to work. He's apparently a stay-at-home dad, and this is what he does on his part-time. So, I think he's a great candidate that can work all the hours that we need.
Motion to appoint.
I make a motion to appoint James Masto-Giovanni till June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen.
Correct, and he'll be on the reappointment list.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Chair.
Mrs. Coffin, do you have anything to report?
Are we not doing, oh, that's planning board's resignation. Okay.
Nothing else?
Old business, nothing? New business, we've taken care of that. Special town meeting, open warrant. That's to the planning board.
Yeah, but do you wanna announce it? Never mind.
Selectmen's forum. Anyone have anything? I have some. I wanna talk a little bit about the community compact. I followed up with Pam Coker. 'Cause my understanding was that for the two grants involved, uh, they, they expire June, on June thirtieth. And it goes through another cycle. And, uh, basically, um, the fifteen thousand dollar portion of that, uh, grant is to codify the, uh, financial bylaws. That, that appeared to go over well. Uh, the plan I, I submitted, uh, the thing was that I was asked just to do a project scope. And that was acceptable. Part B involved, uh, financial capital planning. And, uh, basically, I tried to do the same thing there. And, um, Pam got back to me, she said, "Just hold off until you get a town administrator on board." So, that's where that, that's, that stands at the moment. However, um, going forward, traditionally, the June is the time that, uh, select boards in the Commonwealth establish their goals and objectives for the new fiscal year. And I would like to pick up on that, that practice and, uh, establish goals for the coming, uh, for fiscal seventeen. So, think about individually what you feel the priorities might be. And I would like to establish a workshop in July, early.
Mr. Chairman, the board's, uh, prior practice was to, I believe, at six o'clock at the, before the first meeting of each month. Is that what the board would like to continue, or...
I don't mind that. That sounds like a good practice.
We may need to make an adjustment, though, for July.
Right.
For the holiday. And I know I'm not around.
Okay, if there isn't anything else, our, um, next, uh, regular meeting will be Monday, June twentieth, at seven P.M. We'll, we'll do sig, signatures, and then we'll go into an executive session to, uh, discuss negotiation strategy with non-union personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to leave this meeting after doing signatures, only to return after executive session of Mass General Laws, section thirty A, subsection twenty-one, part two, to conduct, to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel in connection with appointment of town administrator, only to come back to this meeting and adjourn.
I think we had the, to come back for the sole purpose of appointing the town administrator. So, I can't second that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
I know it's, I know that's what we typically do.
Yep. And to...
Do you mean...
Come back to this meeting to, for the sole purpose, if the, if the contract is in agreement, to appoint town administrator, and then adjourn the regular.
I can second that.
Yeah.
Roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.